Okay, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our superintendent apologizes, she was not able to be with us tonight, but we will start with the superintendent's report and the principal's report is first. Jeff?
Is there a clicker?
Who has the clicker?
The clicker's right there near the computer.
Good evening, everyone. Anytime of year at the middle school, high school, the upcoming events, May 24th, I'll just go through this pretty quick, the middle school band and chorus concert, 7:00 PM. Monday, this upcoming Monday, Memorial Day. June 1st is the Common Core Algebra II Regents. We are also going to be administering the Algebra II and Trigonometry Regents, which is the old assessment, later in June. June 2nd, Academic Awards, which is Pearson's equivalent of the Academy Awards, that's a big deal, a lot of practice that goes into that. The NISMAs Solo Festival, June 3rd and 4th. June 6th, the 6th Grade Annual Trip, this year to the Bronx Zoo. June 6th as well, the New York State Science 8 Exam. And the Middle School and High School Orchestra Concert, June 7th, in the gymnasium. So this year, both, all the concerts are held in the gymnasium due to the construction and the auditorium being offline.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
You mentioned that you're also giving the Algebra II trig exam. Are all the kids taking both exam or some of them? Is there?
At this point, the plan is to have all of them sit for two. If someone wants to opt out, they can. State Ed issued some guidance in December stating that school districts could choose the higher of the two exams to put on a student's transcript. We'd originally planned to just issue the Common Core versus the new one, because as you know, the curriculum, the curricula are different in that the new Common Core Algebra II doesn't have the trigonometries. So what the teachers are doing is they're spending about three or four weeks addressing the trigonometry and they are going to sit for the second assessment, but students are able to pick the higher of the two.
Now, did they get some of that trig in geometry? Do you know?
I don't know the answer to that. I think the majority of it is being taught in the next few weeks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, there's more events, sorry. High School Band and Chorus, June 8th, the prom. June 10th, which is in Southampton at the, I guess, the festival hall at the Greek Church. We are going to run a bus this year for students, we're going to be putting that out probably So that students who would like to take a school bus can do so, it should reduce the cost, but we're going to make that bus contingent upon a minimum of 10 students accessing it. That'll be a little bit of a culture shift, because students generally like to arrive via limousine or something congruent with the Hamptons' philosophy, I guess. But we're going to offer it and we'll see what happens.
Jeff, is there going to be a cost to the students?
No, it'll be free. Thanks for asking.
Okay. Because I can tell you personally, limousines cost like over $100 a student in that limousine. It's expensive way to go, 14, 15 minutes to Southend.
The feedback, by the way, I have communicated with the advisor, they would really prefer that the district offer like a jitney bus, and I told the advisor, no, we're going to be offering a school bus, because that's much more, much cheaper for us. That's what we're going to do.
Are there surrounding districts that mandate students take a certain transportation or is it, are the other surrounding districts all open like we are?
Some mandate it, some don't. So it's, it changes every year, but Southampton has at times mandated it, I believe.
Would that every student takes a, a school transportation?
A school bus and they have a whole search process and everything else related to it. So this will be our first step in this direction. For those of you who don't remember, we did issue a survey to parents trying to make it a mandated thing, and the parents clearly opted for that not to be the case. And that was two years ago. They chose three to one to have their children have the option to get there any way they wanted. So we certainly can revisit that moving forward, but we did survey them two years ago. Baccalaureate, well Regents and Finals Week, June 14th to the 22nd. We've already gotten through the IB and the AP testing that Mr. Guinan oversaw, and that concluded last Friday. So our next big testing timeframe is the 14th to the 22nd. Baccalaureate, which is an opportunity for high school students to thank those people who've helped them arrive at this point in their lives, is June 16th at 6:30 in the middle school gym. 8th grade moving up, 10:00 AM on the 22nd. And then finally, high school graduation, 5:00 PM on Saturday, June 25th. I think that's it. Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Good evening, everyone. Just to quickly review some of the past events, a lot of great field trips going on this time of year. Some of our grade levels, as a part of the science curriculum, walked down to some of the local beaches. 1st grade has been down to Havens Beach. I guess it was two weeks ago now, we had our math night, which was another huge success, and special thanks to the PTA for continuing their support of what's, I think we're now in our fourth year, Jocelyn Worell and Mrs. Hewitt chaired the, chaired the night this year and got a lot of volunteers to help out. It was a, it was a great night for the children and their parents, and we had a few grandparents attend, it was a fun time. We celebrated end of month awards for the month of April, on May 6th. 4th grade headed over to Riverhead for the Atlantis Aquarium Trip, which is an annual event, they had, they have a great time. Our 5th grade, this was a show from the book The Lightning Thief, which is an adaptation of Greek mythology. It actually was a trip that was planned back in the winter, but we were snowed out, and then they were able to reschedule it down at the West Hampton Performing Arts Center. And the grade level had a great time, joined by schools from all over the East End. On the 16th, we had our annual open house, and the children along with the staff did an amazing job of sharing all that's going on in the building with the guests, their parents came, family members, some neighbors, and the boys and girls were thrilled to show off all they've accomplished during this, this great school year. We are in our performing arts season, so our various grade levels that meet once a week with members of our music staff and art staff and put together various shows have begun to present those. Our 1st grade shared their show last week, and our 2nd and 3rd grade shows are upcoming along with our, our concert, our concert will be coming shortly, I'll mention that in a moment. Our 4th and 5th graders are working closely with our artists in residence. We have a photographer that's worked with the students for many years, Clarence Shepherd. This is supported generously by the Ruder Shan Trust, and I thank Mr. Solow for always working closely with the elementary art teachers to make this happen. The, the boys and girls get a lot, get a lot out of this endeavor, and we're, we feel really fortunate to have that gift from the Ruder Shan Trust. And Clarence is, he's a real gem, he knows the kids well, he knows our school well, and the pictures that they come up with are just outstanding, they really, they do a great So tons of upcoming events, I think I'll just, I'll pinpoint a few. Our, our spring concert, which I mentioned, is this coming Wednesday, and the different performing groups have, have really been working hard in preparation for that, so we're looking forward to a wonderful, wonderful night of music. We do have some end of the year testing continuing. On May 26th, our 4th graders will begin the performance portion of the science test that's given every year to 4th graders and as well as 8th graders in the state. And there's also a written component, which will be given on, on June 6th. So that assesses how the, the children are doing in the elementary science program. We are continuing with the foundations training, which we've implemented K through 2 this year, and next year, we are moving that instruction to grade 3. So on the 25th and June 1st, we will have our 3rd grade teachers get some intensive training from Carol Mason, who's been a great staff developer this year in our building. We're looking forward to June 3rd, Friday, June 3rd, the Sag Harbor Whalers, they're the collegiate baseball players that come to the community every year. They have been guests at morning program for a long time, and the, the kids get a real kick out of seeing these players come in in uniform. And I think the, the most important thing that the boys and girls get from that is not only the excitement of seeing these athletes come in, but hearing about what effort and all the hard work that they've had to put in to, to make it to where they are as scholar athletes. And these guys, these young men always stress the importance of working hard in the classroom as well as on the ball field, so that's always a fun day for the, for the school. That's, that afternoon, our kindergarten show will be presented to the families the day prior. We'll have our show for the school. And then we're, we're heading into the end of the year, we'll have our kindergarten visitation for next year's kindergarten students on June 10th. Couple of the performing arts shows you can see there. And lastly, June 17th is our 5th grade celebration, the, the graduation sorts for our 5th graders, and they'll be making their way over to Pearson next year. Thank you.
Okay, next is our-
Oh, there's a couple, just a couple shots.
Oh.
Sorry. There's some shots of our swimming program. Our physical education teachers lead this, this grade program at the YMCA. And you can see some of the boys and girls, these are some of our 1st graders, I think that's a 1st grader getting a ride with Coach Crowley there. It's a happy 1st grader underwater shot there.
That's great. These are wonderful.
And what's great with the program, aside from getting introduced to the facility at the Y and obviously getting some swimming instruction, at the end of the program, when things are all done, the boys and girls are, their swimming ability is rated, and the parents receive a report card, which will encourage them to pursue swimming lessons during the summer at some of the various spots on the East End. Here's a few shots of our math night, I think there's Ms. Coloff there. You're building the abacus, right? There's a pre-K show, Dyno Mania, they present it for their, for their parents. And I think Mr. Brownoff is going to take it from here.
Mr. Brownoff?
Jeff? There are some slides here that didn't show up there, but they spoke about the Teeny Awards and the valedictorian and salutatorian, I don't know if you wanted to speak to them, because it really shines a light on some great achievements.
Thank you. So I have the, I had had an email from Ms., Ms. Brennan, who, this is her last year at Pearson, but she did talk about the honors that were bestowed upon our actors for the Teeny Awards. And I don't have the specific information, but a number of our actors and actresses were nominated for their roles and performances throughout the year. So I don't have the specific names in front of me, but congratulations to all concerned.
Jeff, I heard that it was the most Teeny Awards that any show had ever received in the history of the teens.
That's great.
So it's a wonderful, you know, it's a wonderful example, great performance of students, and what a nice way for her to enter her career here.
Yes.
I think 13, is that right? 13 nominations?
And can you give me, for those of you that want to buy a ticket, where is it being held?
It's being held at Shoreham Waiting River High School on June-
Is it Sunday, the 5th?
June 5th. The same, same day as the-
June 5th.
By the way, there's about 19 or 20 schools, East End schools were involved in the Teeny Awards, and so this is, this is really something. And the schools are much bigger than Sag Harbors', and we got more awards than anyone.
Nominations.
Nominations.
But we got a lot of awards for the Addams Family, didn't we?
Oh, Addams Family was awesome, yes.
Yeah.
Nomination as well.
Well, that's, that's great news. The valedictorian and the salutatorian, we did inform the students of those honors, and the valedictorian for the class of 2016 is Courtney Cincella, and the salutatorian is Evan Johnson. And basically, they are ranked at the end of the 7th semester, which is the end of January of their senior year, and the weighted averages are tabulated, and that is also when class rank is done as well. So congratulations to those two, those two students for their effort and achievement.
And mom.
And mom. Matt, do you mind if I ask you a follow-up question? I saw on the calendar, the science test for 4th grade is coming up, but is there a performance piece for that as well, or just the written test? Do you know?
There is, there is. The, the boys and girls go into the science lab and are asked to perform a few activities related to measurement, balance, electricity.
And do you know the dates of that?
The first, the first one is the 26th, and then some days to follow, and then the written is Monday, the 6th, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Eric Brownoff with the athletics and facility report.
We have a couple of events coming up for the athletics as we kind of wind down our year here. Athletic committee meeting and wellness committee are May 24th. Our softball team has qualified for the Long Island Championship Game, which will be held at June 2nd versus East Rockaway. We have won the Suffolk County Class C softball championship, I believe it is three or maybe four years in a row now. I think 2011 may have been the last time that we didn't win it, so the girls should be commended on that. We have a round of sports physicals coming up, June 6th and June 13th. Another correspondence will be sent out, it's also on the athletics website, I do believe. It's very important that we try to push for these, these dates to be the dates that are utilized by the majority of the students, and then we can always offer one in August for the children that missed it. But we try to get them all done in June, and then we don't have to conflict with practice schedules and vacations, which are typically taken towards the end of the summer. Big night for our athletes will be June 9th, where we'll hold the athletic awards in the gym. It'll be, it'll be 6 to 8 o'clock at night. Light, light food will be served, similar to last year. This is, I encourage everybody in the community to please come out. It's a, it's a pretty nice, pretty nice night for all the athletes. I've been working on a digital athletic participation survey for grades 6 through 11, so that will be next year's students that are eligible to participate in interscholastic activities. This is going to help me guide the future of the program in terms of combining sports and, and what teams we're going to be looking to run into the future. I think this is a component that's been missing, and, you know, it's going to go to everybody in the district, there'll also be a, a part of the survey where they can choose, they can say, my child does not participate in athletics. Buildings and grounds, we're very busy, too much to list, a lot of it is covered in your construction report. Again, I, I have to give credit where credit is due, my staff and my supervisors, tremendous job in preparation for the, for the Board of Education, excuse me, for the budget vote and the art show. I received a memo from the administrative offices today, seconding that notion, so they're very proud of that. I, you know, they need to be commended on all their hard work, the place really was top, top shape for the budget vote. The concrete was poured today over at the elementary school for the new addition. That, that hit a minor snafu, we found a pipe we didn't know was there, but they've since, they've since worked around it, and it's looking pretty good. I put on the slide, the auditorium demolition is almost complete, but I believe it is complete at this time. I'll let Jennifer and Mike answer questions on that. And then I also met with Kevin Herbst, who is our advisor in terms of fire code for the district. Since we have so many things changing, and everything is very fluid right now, we wanted to make sure that we were up to code in all our, in all our emergency exits, which we had to use today. So, and this is just some pictures of the concrete, there's the big sewage pipe that we're working around, and I believe that's it. I believe Barbara's going to do the super-dos.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Katie put together a little overview of some of the work that the Sag Harbor Coalition has been doing, and I've been a longstanding member, so she asked me to present on her behalf. So the Sag Harbor Community Coalition has been in existence, I don't know if everyone realizes this, for about five years, and it was a group of community members and school staff coming together to start to talk about drug and alcohol prevention. And it took a while for us to get off the ground, but over time, through Nancy Linett of the Southampton Youth Bureau and some other people, Kim Laubie, they really recommended that with all the work the Coalition had been doing, that we apply for a drug-free grant. And we did apply, we got rejected, but encouraged to apply again, and we did get awarded the grant this October, so that's what that first slide sort of indicates. Then it's up to me. Some of the accomplishments prior to getting awarded the drug-free grant were the sticker shock program, I'll show you some pictures of that afterwards, where the police chief, Fabiano, some students, some Coalition members went through the town and started applying certain stickers to the alcohol, so that it was warning people, if you're underage, not to sell the alcohol to underage children. And two forms of ID, and I'll show you that poster coming up, where they went around and placed them in vendors that sold alcohol to please ask for two forms of ID, because if you ask for one form of ID, I think Katie talked about this the last time, the likelihood of a student or a young adult having two forms is less. We put together some activities for kids to have healthy alternatives, we did a pizza and a movie, we did a teen band gig, we started to develop, enriched our curriculum in terms of drug and alcohol at both the elementary school, middle and high school. We established a website, we had a youth speak-out, we had a series of parent workshops, and then finally, the culmination was getting awarded the drug-free grant. So this is a picture of the posters that were put in liquor stores and 7-Eleven, just to remind people about what we're all about. This is the two forms of ID. This is what the sticker looked like, and we were, we were working with Kim Laubie in HUGS, she was part of many other coalitions, so we called on her to sort of help guide us through the process, and she has been instrumental in getting a lot of this off the ground. There's a picture last year of some of the students doing the sticker shock. A big thing that's happening now is that the school has been doing quite a bit as part of the Coalition, but the success of the drug-free grant and establishing changes in communities is to get all of these 12 sectors involved. So one of the goals now is to increase capacity, because it was a lot of the same people who kept coming to the meetings, and they were good people, but we needed, you know, other contributors at the table. So these are the 12 sectors. Goal one is to increase community collaboration, and we started, Stephanie and I were at a meeting last week where we got some new members, and they started to do some team-building activities to increase the Coalition members. And goal two, to reduce, of course, substance use by youth, and you can sort of read through the objectives. So the Sag Harbor Community Coalition is working in tandem with the director of the drug-free grant in Kim Laubie, and many of us are members of the Strategic Planning Committee. So we work with the drug-free grant people to, to brainstorm ideas and to implement some of the things that were written in the grant. And this is just some more of the activities, I sort of went over that. And some of the things the school has done is implementing Red Ribbon Week, they're also trying to produce a public service announcement about the social host law, that's been in the works for a couple of years, we're just struggling in getting it produced, and we want it to be disseminated in local movie theaters.
Meryl Streep cooperating. I often, nobody wants.
And the, the next event is on June 1st. It's a Substance Abuse Prevention Forum, and I and a few other members attended the presentation in West Hampton Beach about a month or two ago. It's a pretty powerful presentation, and we're bringing it to the Unitarian Universalist Meeting House, that's on June 1st, as you can see, 6 to 8. Hopefully, all of this has gone home to all of the parents, but it's for community members as well. And you will meet a woman who lost her son to an overdose, and it's a very powerful story, but sort of, not that it's uplifting at the end, but you come away knowing, getting some really good ideas and understanding some of the things that led up to it, and what parents can learn and what a community can do to protect our children. So that's on June 1st, and then I think on June 2nd, oh, that's not me. I think on June 2nd, that is being repeated, but I don't have the venue.
Barbara, it's the same exact presentation with Linda Ventura and Kim Laubie. Don't spread this rumor, but in the same room, the prom's being held at. So on June 2nd at 6:00 PM, at the Muses in Southampton, which is the hall of the Greek Orthodox Church, Linda and Kim are doing that again.
I think that's open to surrounding school districts as well.
The invitation went out to the entire East End.
Which is great. And the other thing is, I would really encourage parents of elementary school students to participate on this. I think historically, I've witnessed that it's not until, sometimes until parents get into high school and they start potentially suspecting unhealthy behavior, that they start getting engaged in this. But the reality is, I've sat through, not with Linda, but I've sat through several presentations with Kim, and part of that dialogue is, when your children are younger, how do you, how do you help guide them and know what to look for and create safer environments so that they don't end up being at risk as they get older? So I think the younger, you know, your children are, kind of, the more advantage you will have to engaging earlier.
So first of all, a big thank you to the whole Sag Harbor community for supporting our budget, budget this year. Last Tuesday, our budget did pass with the highest passing rate in recent history. We eked, eked out last year's passing percentage. Last year, our budget passed by 74.53 percent. This year, our budget passed by 75.25 percent. Yes, it was really wonderful, it was a wonderful day. We've had amazing voter turnout that day. We had 1,325 voters come out for our budget vote. That compared to last year, last year we only had 966 people come out, so those were really great numbers, and that was a really great improvement in the community's awareness of the budget and the community being able to come out and show their support for the budget. On this slide, I do have that the property tax rebate is in effect for the next school year. We had the property tax freeze credit in effect for last school year and this school year. So for next year, star eligible taxpayers will also be receiving a check in the mail for about $130, so that will definitely help with any tax increase. That was the result of, of the budget tax levy increase. And the second proposition on Tuesday also passed, and that was the proposed purchase of the former Salem Morris School. It was, it was actually interesting that we had six more people that voted on the Salem Morris proposition than voted on the budget. So we had six people come in and not even care about the budget, but anyway, it was good. We had 1,331 community members come out. The passing margin was 55.3 percent, and it passed by 141 votes. So Katie also wanted to thank the community, and this is a really positive thing for us that we can move forward and just keep sustaining all of the wonderful educational programs that we have to offer. The next thing on tonight's agenda is going to be a, a bond update presentation. We have Mr. Michael Malakatton here from Savin Engineers. I'm actually going to put up his presentation and just talk a little bit about him. I'm actually gonna put up his presentation and just talk a little bit about him. So, Mr. Malakatin has been on site every single day since the bond project has started, and he's really been wonderful in just getting everything, you know, off the ground and just to keep the projects going and staying on schedule. But if you've noticed, we have awarded many contracts already. On March 21st, we awarded the bulk of all the contracts for the Proposition 1 work. On April 19th, we awarded a window repair contract. Today, on tonight's agenda, you'll see that we are awarding another window replacement contract for the elementary school. And then on May 31st, on Monday, we're gonna have a public hearing to discuss the use of our repair reserve in order to fund some of the site work that was included in that proposition. So we're gonna be awarding those contracts on the 31st. Just for complete transparency purposes, I did ask our architects and engineers to come up with a list of all of the things that we were not able to award yet, and most of those things, for various reasons, is just lack of funding. Some of the items were included in Proposition 1 that we couldn't award, and then other items were addendum items that were added later on that we could not award just because of the lack of funding. So I had Mike incorporate that list into his presentation, so that everybody could see exactly, you know, what is not being included in the project. So when the project is over, there's not gonna be any questions as to, you know, I thought this was included, and I thought this was included, and where is this? So as, if we do have future funds going forward, and we can award some of these items, then we'll be updating the public, we'll be updating everyone on that. Mike will probably be attending most of our board meetings going forward to just give an update, because a lot does happen from month to month, and things do change. So I'm going to hand this over to Mike, and he can go ahead and proceed with his presentation.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the board, the administration and the community for the opportunity to provide you with an update of the construction. Clicker here. This is just a table of contents and some of the team members here with the board, administration, architect and CM firm that I belong to. Just a quick summary of the entire project. It started off on the 25th of April, and we started with the demolition of the auditorium and surveying the elementary school, where the new addition's going to be. And that started us off, I guess it's April 25th. This is a picture. It's a little dark, but this is your auditorium at the start. Seats taken out, some demo of some ceiling. And then we had some flooring. As you can see, the old floor in the center picture there, that's the old gym from, I guess, 1907. Mr. Bramhoff had some of the alum come down to take a picture. I guess that was the last team to play on that court. After that, immediately after that, the court was ripped up and never to be seen again.
I did save some pieces.
Right, so I think that was the greatest photo I've taken.
So, at this point, the entire auditorium has been demoed, and the MEPs, which is Mechanical, Electrical and Plumbing, they're starting to do their roughings of their particular devices, conduits and so forth. So that'll be happening over the next few days, and then from there on, we'll be laying the concrete and getting ready for, you know, carpentry and so forth. But we're in the early stages right now when it comes to that. The excavation of the courtyard, right here in the middle school, high school, that started May 4th. We have the first picture, it was the bobcat being craned over. There's really no way of getting a bobcat into the courtyard, so we had to get a crane and put it over into the courtyard and start the excavation. This is underway right now, and we're about ready to get the rebar on-site and start forming for the footings and foundation. So we're a couple of days behind schedule with regards to that, but when it comes to the construction, you'll always have that flexibility in that you'll be ahead a couple of days, nothing to cheer about and be behind a couple of days, nothing to get too upset about, because it's just between submittals, between scheduling and coordination, sometimes that happens. But overall, I did tell the contractor to just put in a schedule to show that he's going to make up the time. It's just a couple of days at this point. But I don't want it to slip any further than what it's going. The next slide will show what's happening over at the elementary school. We started with the removal of the windows, and those had to be remediated, then surveying where the addition is going. And now, at this point, the excavation, they have the footings and the foundation, was just poured today. So to follow, we'll have backfill of that area and get the slab put in place. So that's moving along very well, as a matter of fact. So we're right on target with regards to that aspect of the construction. As Ms. Beston brought out, this is, did you want me to speak on this, or?
Yeah. I think this is, you know, this is just a list of what was included in the Proposition 1 items that we really couldn't, that we cannot award. And everybody, you know, we are trying to find additional funding going forward. This could be something that could be included in our budget discussions going forward. But I guess you can see it's window replacements at the Pearson High School right now. Today, we're awarding the elementary school window replacements, but we are not awarding the window replacements for this building. And also, the only window replacement project that isn't being awarded at the elementary school is just the windows on the Quincy Avenue elevation, but everything else from that award is getting done, from that project's getting done.
Jennifer, just to kind of create clarity, the lack of funding, part of it, from what I understand, is because this whole process of getting through the state for approval took much longer than it did before the bond was voted on, and with those delays, in that period, costs went up higher. And secondly, we needed some different materials than originally anticipated that had some additional cost, correct?
Our original window bid came in actually very, very high, because the original bid we specced out was for hurricane windows, and after BBS and the architects reviewed what was actually needed in the building, they didn't need to have hurricane windows. So they were able to downgrade the type of window, and that's how we were able to afford at least all of the windows in one of the buildings. But we weren't able to squeeze in, you know, work for both of the buildings. These are all of the other items that were listed in the bid specs as addendum items and ultimate items, where, you know, a lot of times, when you do a project, you do have funds left over at the end of the project, and then you could kind of award things that you definitely talked about during the whole presentation and project development phase to the community. But I thought that this was important to let everyone know that a lot of these items, because of the cost, we just could not award them. Some of these costs came in extremely high, and if we ever do, if we are able to have additional funds to award some of them, we would actually rebid a lot of these items to see if they came in lower. The colored LED lighting for the coves outside, also the motorized hoist for the high school auditorium, those two bids, the $46,300, the $39,100, and actually, the decorative lighting, the $60,000, was very, very high, and they felt that if we ever did, if we do have additional funds, we would rebid those items. So this is the list for Pearson Middle High School, and then the next list is actually everything at the elementary school.
Can I ask something about that, though? Can you just explain the five additional spaces at Division Street Lot? What's that about?
I believe that there was an original plan for the site work in the lot, and through talks and discussions and presentations to the community, that there were going to be five additional spaces added to the original plan. I do not know all of this, since, you know, I can't tell you exactly how everything progressed because I wasn't here, but I do know that we are gonna have the public hearing on the site work on Monday. So on Monday, we are gonna review exactly what is included in all of the site work and what is not included in all of the site work. And we'll be presenting more of, you know, a timeline of how the whole projects have progressed, site work-wise. So on Monday, I should have more information.
Jennifer, can you, in that report, let us know how much, how many parking spaces we're gonna lose as a result of this?
Yes. On Monday, I'm going to do a full report on just the site work, because on Monday, we're going to be awarding...
Monday's Memorial Day?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, not Monday, 31st, Tuesday. On Tuesday, we're gonna be awarding, the site work contract is over $1 million. So we're gonna discuss the use of $645,000 worth of repair reserve funds to go towards that million-dollar price tag, and we're going to discuss and review every single thing that we're going to be getting for that million dollars. So that's on Tuesday.
I know that part of the conversation around that parking lot had to do with preserving trees that are now gone because of the storm and disease and all that. So has that parking lot been, those plans being revisited since those trees are no longer there?
No, it has not been revisited because of the lack of funds. So there wasn't a lot of wiggle room to change anything in the original plan or in the original bid specs. So this was an addition, you'll see, if you go to the next slide, the elementary school, there were six additional parking spaces that we're going, we just can't fund right now at the elementary school. That's something that came off, you know, came off the table also. So I think moving forward, as we see what we have in funds, we can go ahead and reevaluate some of these items, and definitely reevaluate them based on all of the new things that have occurred on our ground.
Jennifer, can you just describe what the process is to make the decisions on these trade-offs?
These were not included in the original, original project. These were all add-ons.
Right.
So we could not afford any of the add-ons.
So this was the wish list, and the wish list is remaining?
Yes, yes.
The add-on prices were at the current...
This is the current bid prices that we received for the add-ons.
This, right now, is the current bid prices?
Yes, yes.
Did we estimate what they, what it cost that we didn't bother because they were add-ons?
They were all, they were all estimates included in the original work. And also, what happens is, is most, every school building project, they always have wish list items if we have leftover funds in the end, but for now, we're not projecting any leftover funds, and right now, we are not projecting that we're going to be awarding any of this anytime soon. So I just felt that everyone, as part of the update, needed to know what was not being awarded right now, so that we didn't have a lot of questions in the end as to where are these things. Complete transparency here. So we have...
Go ahead, I'm sorry, who was gonna say something?
No, I was just gonna say, is there anything in the original project, other than what we were told at previous meetings, that we're not, we haven't awarded today?
We have still not awarded, the only other award that we're planning on doing is the site work award for Tuesday, the 31st. That's the only thing we have an award. We're awarding all the elementary school windows tonight, and we've awarded projects March 21st and April 19th. So these are all the items that, at the elementary school, that right now, we cannot award. These were all added as bid alternates and addendum items.
Okay, can I ask about a new security desk at the elementary school? Is that something that should not be avoided?
No, that is something that we would probably see if we could fund with our, some of our equipment money in the general fund. So that would be, just, we just purchased, we had some leftover funds, we purchased a desk at Pearson.
I saw it.
And you can see that. So we are gonna have the vestibule done over the summer, so that $12,000 could, in fact, come out of some of our contingency equipment money through the budget. But that would be funded through the general fund and not through the capital fund. And we're gonna be providing updates at every meeting, as I said. I know you have one more slide to just conclude, and then we invited Mike to comply also on June 20th for the next business meeting, but...
No problem. The only thing I wanted to just say is that overall, the project is going fairly well, and that we did have some coordination issues with certain contractors, but that seems to be, you know, taking care of itself. We're rectifying that. And then, as I brought out before, there are a couple contractors where they're a couple of days behind. I don't like to let that go too far out, because, you know, a couple of days turns into, a couple of weeks turns into a month and so forth, so I asked them for a schedule to make up those days. So that's, that has been handed to me, and we will, in the next week or so, make up that time, and with extra manpower and so forth. And that's about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Susan, what I think would be very helpful from the superintendent is to get some kind of, I don't wanna say simple chart, but kind of cheat sheet that lists the key projects going on now, you know, what are the one or two steps left, or whatever it is, and what's the projected due date, that gets sent to the board, but also posted on the website, so everyone in the public has a real clear understanding of what's happening and when they should expect it to be complete.
Mike, when is that master schedule to be available?
It should be in the next two days.
Oh, so really, by the end of the week, then?
Yes, positively by the end of the week.
Okay.
That would be great. Again, it may, you know, there may be internal documents that the people in the project use that are quite lengthy and complicated. I'm thinking also about something that's just very easy and accessible to the average community member, just, okay, I get it, here's the five big projects, but let's just have that snapshot, and then it gets updated when there's a material change. And, you know, when we get it, the public should get it, so they know exactly what's going on. Thank you. Is the rest of the board in agreement with that?
I was gonna take it a step further in the fact that I would love to see what exactly was approved versus what we've awarded, so that they're side by side, so that we're all clear on windows that aren't being replaced versus what was voted on and approved.
I agree, Stephanie, thank you.
And it's not unusual for a bond project that has a lot of components, that particularly now, when it has to sit in Albany for so long because they're holding it up in every district, that when you get time for construction, there may be some pieces that have to be put on hold. It seems like that most of the key pieces are being done, but you're right, everybody should know if there's anything that's being delayed or, you know, being put on hold.
Or unfortunately, due to the fact that it did take so long, and the pricing and the bids that came back out, that when we go back in futures for a vote, again, that someone doesn't say, well, wait a minute, why wasn't this? Let's really be clear on what we're doing and what we're not doing.
Yep, it's very important. I wanna thank all the members of our Facilities Committee, because, you know, sometimes you've got committees that work for a while, get something done, and then they move on. This is the gift that keeps on giving. And there are people on the committee who've been there for years and years, and seeing some things come to fruition and some for the next round, and the level of kind of commitment and dedication to sticking with it and getting the right things done has been really inspirational. So thank you to all those committee members.
Okay. Anybody have any more comments? Okay. All right, let's move to Arkansas's agenda. Can I have a motion for items 1 through 6, please?
So moved.
One second.
I just wanna mention that it includes 5A, which was an addendum item.
That's correct.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion's carrying. Okay, can I have a motion for business items 7 through 22?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
With, I have a question about item number 13. In the resolution, it doesn't have an approximate value.
I think that we need to add the wording, after, "The donation includes the following at an approximate value of $16,000."
Okay. And secondly, I wanna thank, who is it, Mr. Stanley?
Correct, Greg Stanley.
Greg Stanley, I wanna accept, I wanna thank Greg Stanley, I wanna thank Local Echo Works, I wanna thank the Wellness Foundation for all of their donations. We appreciate it so much, and once again, we accept donations gratefully and gracefully from all that wanna donate. And I wanna just kind of bet out number 13. From what I understand, is it accurate that this donation is to help us kind of ban... ban date the field while we're exploring what the long-term option is going to be? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, so this isn't the end. This is really just to get it going while we explore as a board and a committee and a community what the options are and what the direction is that we should go to ultimately, correct?
Yes.
I think there was some confusion about that.
I just wanted to add on item 21, I would like to add the word detailed. After the number 2A, I would like to add detailed summary of such transfers will be presented to the Board of Education upon the official closing of the 2015-2016 books.
Can I, I have to go back to number 13 for one second. Eric, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
This, this work, when it gets done, will help us, how?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know the scope of the project. I haven't met with Mr. Stanley.
Okay. I mean, I know it will help, it's just, how long and what our next move is, but we're going to have to have a public discussion about that. Okay.
Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, I mean, I wasn't supposed to ask that question. I apologize. Okay, go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carry. Can I have a motion for agenda item number 22A as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for personnel actions, item 23 through 28, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second, please? Okay. Any discussion? I just have a question for Jennifer Thomas Premiano.
Yeah.
He's, he is replacing a full-time person in your office?
Yes.
He is, okay. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion's carry. Okay. Okay, committee reports. Do we have an athletic committee report?
Yes, we'll be holding, I believe, our last meeting of the year, this week. And we'll be able to give a summary of everything that was completed during the school year.
Okay, great. There's no audit committee report. Is there a communications committee report?
No. Actually, we canceled last meeting and the website is what we're continuing to work on.
Okay. Community Coalition, we kind of had...
You, you covered that in the two events, sir.
Educational Facilities Planning Committee.
Yes, we met on April 21st. We were given a task of two items for that night, the criteria for receiving future donations in recognition of a specific group, employee, community member, volunteer, or current or former student. And the recommendation on that item was that the EFPC concluded that the Wall of Honor Committee should expand their role to develop criteria and rules for all types of special recognition awards. The Wall of Honor Committee could potentially just be named the Honor Committee to advise the board on all aspects of group, employee, community member, volunteer, and student recognition. The second thing on the agenda for that night was to discuss future athletic field options. And we had a recommendation and we also had some action items. So the recommendation from the committee, they really overwhelmingly felt that the voters in the community should decide on whether the field should be synthetic turf or natural grass. One of the action items that night was to, to start obtaining estimates for all the available options without the track and possibly without the baseball and softball diamonds. And the other action item for that night was to talk to bond counsel, who are attorneys who pretty much develop and oversee all of the propositions that move forward with the community. And they, the committee wants me to determine what the language of a new voter proposition would be if voters were given the opportunity to decide on the future athletic field options. I did have action, that action item covered. I did speak to bond counsel about the possibility of having the voters decide. And their, their writing, their response to me was that there is no legal authority for the Board of Education to submit alternative or contingent propositions at an annual or special meeting of the district. And that was it. And our next meeting is June 1st. And on June 1st, we will be having an update also on the bond project.
Since we're on this right now, can we just have a brief conversation about how, you know, should this be old business? How do we map out a conversation that's going to be public, that spells out the options and has a dialogue? Would you rather, should we talk about it in old business or should we talk about it now?
I think you should talk about it in old business.
Okay.
It's not a committee report. Mash Park Board?
Mash Park had a meeting week and a half ago, almost two weeks ago. And they talked about the summary of the spring sports season and said that our athletic directors and our coaches have been terrific to work with, our student athletes have been a pleasure to host. It has been a particularly challenging year because it's had a wet season. And there's been some discussion about what teams we're going to, they're going to be hosting or not in the fall, so we're looking collaboratively on that. Their tennis program has kicked in. And there was a lot of discussion about the playground. You've probably read about it in the Psych Harbor Express, but there's a lot of ongoing work in developing the plan. If you're interested in seeing it on a, a big board with the, the proposed plan is, it is in the office of the Mash Park, which is a building to the right of the stands upstairs, and it's available to look at. And I believe, Mr. Malone, they were going to put one together that could, if it's not there already.
Not yet.
Yeah, but they're also putting one, the board's putting one together to host in the elementary school so parents and students could see it as well. They really incorporated a lot of the ideas and fabulous design and imagination of the elementary school children. And they're going to be going back and continue to update them. I think there's an update coming, is it, was it last Friday they did an update or this Friday?
I think.
Voting program?
After the Memorial Day.
After Memorial Day, they're going to, there's going to be, some of, some of us on the board are going to come in and just share some of those plans with the, with the students. So that was it.
Okay. Nutrition, Wellness, Health, and Safety Committee.
Our last meeting was rescheduled for this week, so we'll have a report next time.
Policy Committee, our, our meeting was, was also rescheduled. Wall of Honor Committee?
We met on May 4th to review nominations. We're still on our timeline for our calls to announce a graduation and to induct homecoming. And next steps are around the design of the actual wall. We're working with Ms. Marchesella.
Okay. Okay, items for discussion.
I just would like some clarity on our options. So we, maybe you can just summarize for us again because one of the recommendations from the committee was that possibly if we went out to the voters and said, you know, which do you like better, Coke or Pepsi, that's not an option, right?
It's not an option after I talked to bond counsel. And the options that were discussed at a previous meeting still stand. And those options would be to move forward with a proposition allowing the district to use capital reserve funds to fund the difference in what our turf field, what about, in order to move forward with the synthetic turf field and subsidize some of that cost difference. The second option was for the district to try and get special legislation enacted so that the board could then submit a proposition to the voters to have the object and purpose of that, of the use of those funds changed from synthetic turf to natural grass. Those are really, where we stand right now, those are really the two options. So the board would have to decide on whether we move forward with, with either one.
So then, next steps might be, it sounds like some are interested in cost of either option or...
I think it goes beyond that. And we had references, the last time there was a discussion, a significant discussion at the board meeting, there was a discussion about trying to identify and, you know, kind of an independent expert of sorts who could come in and share with the community and the board and particularly the committee, what are the different options? What is the research saying about those options now? Because the last kind of vetting we had was a while ago, quite a while ago. And what are the costs? Because the costs are different now than a while ago. And having a robust public discussion, which I really think we need, and I think the community has told us that they expect that as well. So we have to figure out how to have that and how to try to accelerate that in some capacity because we still, you know, however long this takes, we still have children who need fields to play on.
And there was actually one more that bond counsel discussed with us, is that if the, if the board decided to move forward with the turf and to subsidize the costs with capital reserve funds and that got...
Say that again, if the...
If the board decided to move forward with synthetic turf and subsidize the cost difference with capital reserve funds and that was voted down, then the board could then go out and try and have special legislation pass and then use those funds towards a natural grass field. So it's not really, you can't put both the choices in the proposition, but you could have a second proposition if the first one fails.
But every time you have a public vote, unfortunately now, it's much more expensive than it used to be.
It does cost us money.
Because we're now, we are, there's new legislation that requires those voting machines and I don't, what did our, what did it cost to hold the vote last week?
We are still adding all of that up. We have, you know, vouchers that we still have not paid yet. So once we pay off all those bills, we can report out on exactly what it cost us.
But I remember the projections for, you know, maybe...
It's, a lot of the projections are driven by advertising costs too. So if we have enough time to get those ads in local papers versus news day, we do save some money in, you know, in that regard.
Okay. But ultimately, if we can find a solution that doesn't require a series of votes, it's probably better. So, so I guess I'm asking the question again, how do we create a process where we're going to have a robust, honest, public, you know, discussion about what the options are, what the costs are, what are the making factors around those options? Because I feel like we haven't done that in a while.
I agree, it's key. Absolutely.
So, so how do we get that done?
I have one other thing about timing, I'm sorry. The legislative sessions, I believe that they, they're not going to be in full session again until January. So if we do decide to go with the legislative session option where we ask our state assembly
leader and our senator to move forward with, with this, with this law for us to use those funds, it is going to be a couple of months before we can go ahead and, and do that. So that is another...
Okay, and I, you lost me at the Coke and Pepsi. You really did. And first of all, I'm not going to sleep tonight until I apologize to Eric. I didn't mean to ask you something backwards, so let me go back. The reason I asked you that is because until we decide, not, we decide nothing, until the community decides this donation is going to help our kids and the field. So that's, right, so, but I...
Stephanie, the, the issue is, regardless of what work is done to the fields, I have no means of establishing a timetable or scope of the project.
Which is why I'm saying I shouldn't have put you on the spot there. Right, I, I understand what you're saying. But I'm lost. Give me back our choices. Did you understand it?
I'm starting to.
You can't, you can't do an either or proposition.
But, but if you were going to go out, can't you do both on one? So...
That's what we're saying.
But that's where I lost you, go ahead.
Well, you could, you could, but the fear would be that...
It's the same funding.
Either both pass or both fail.
You can't have either or.
Right. The only...
I don't see...
It's one pot of money.
Right. You can't, you can't have an either or vote for this at the same time.
You can only have an up or down vote.
Right, you can either have, either we like this or not, not we like this and not that. So it can't be Coke or Pepsi, is it? Do you like Coke or do you not like Coke?
So the option is to look, to ask the public for more funding of a synthetic field or...
Or...
Try to go in January and get a law passed that we can use that funds for an organic field.
To repurpose the bond.
Right, to repurpose the bond, we need permission to do that.
Okay, but, but, but we are saying that before we would ask for a law to repurpose the bond to an organic field, that we are going to have a public discussion about which way to go?
Not only which way to go, I think we need a discussion that, first of all, presents what today's options are because a lot of what was voted on was, is now dated.
Yes, we've, we've established all that, right?
So to have a public discussion, yes.
Okay, but even if we were to have the angel come from heaven and make us, allow us to repurpose the bond, okay? We still don't have enough money. Correct, am I, am I not correct?
We don't know that.
Did we get numbers on grass fields?
No, we, we don't have those numbers.
We actually got, we got an estimate, we presented it at the Educational Facilities Planning Committee, we spoke to a couple of people, that estimates. From what I'm told, we definitely would have more than enough money for the grass field here.
Right.
We may have leftover funds for other things.
But we haven't had, we probably haven't had a discussion.
The discussion to repurpose, to what? That's what we're looking for input from the community.
Absolutely.
Right. We need to have a session to understand what we could potentially, if the legislation passed in our favor, would reallocate the funds to what the community would like to see happen to the turf, to the fields.
It was explained to us previously, this is not legislation that gets voted on for the entire state. When districts have a bond vote and then later on, they decide that they would like to use the money a different way.
Right.
They go to the legislation and this is the process, they get approval to do it. So it's not like there's a new state law that applies across from seed of Chinese state.
From what I'm told, it's fairly easy to get the legislation.
It's procedural.
And it's more of a rubber stamp and...
And time-wise?
Time-wise, though, I believe that they are, they're only in session for a little bit longer if, if they may have ended their sessions. And then the next session, I don't think, it begins in January with the governor's State of the State address.
End of January. Jennifer, would we need, I'm sorry, would we need a vote before it went to special legislation? If we did decide to, would we need a public vote?
Yes, you, I, you would, you would have to somehow show that everyone in the room is in agreement to go ahead and, and reach out to the legislators for the special legislation.
The board or the public?
No, this would be the board. This would not go to the voters, asking for the special legislation. Because after the special legislation is passed, then the voters would vote on it.
So that actually is an option, but that window is closing for this year?
It is closing for this year.
And when we go, if we go and ask for that, we don't know at that point if that is even what the public wants because there hasn't been a vote yet.
But from, in the, I think this is such uncharted territory that it was, first, we were informed that we could get the legisla, we have to get the legislation passed and then the vote. And then, in another conversation, we heard from another attorney that we can get the vote first and then the special legislation. But from now, what I heard as of today, it is special legislation first and then vote.
From our bond attorney?
Yes.
I, I'm sorry, the pile of money that was approved by the voters for the bond project that we're not moving ahead with, is there a way to ask prior to June 20th for the legislative permission to repurpose that money so we don't have to wait till January?
What I can do is, I can find out from bond counsel what the process is. I can see if there's any way we could get that added to the calendar before June 20th and then I could report out on the 31st since this is actually, this was all bid out along with our site work contract. So I can definitely provide you with an update if there's any way we could possibly get this on before June 20th.
Right, because if it's a, a simple procedure that I kind of hear could be rubber stamped...
And then we would probably have to have a meeting just to approve a resolution that the whole board would like the legislators to go ahead and do this.
Okay, that, that the Board of Ed would like to ask permission from the legislators to allow us to repurpose the money that was already voted on, approved and, and the bond money, which is one point, whatever it is, right?
Yes.
Six million? Okay, wouldn't that be our better option for us to try to do that quickly before June 20th?
It doesn't obligate us from doing anything. It just gives us permission if we, if we choose to. So yes, I agree with you.
Right, so if we could sneak under the...
Right, that's what she's going to check.
Right.
Yes, because the state controller...
You just said, Jennifer, that we could vote on this and then request permission from the state legislature, is that...
Yes. So what I would do is, first, I think the first thing to do is for me to make some phone Yes, um, so what I would do is, first, I think the first thing to do is for me to make some phone calls to see whether or not we would be able to get this even on their calendar. Um, if there is a process for doing that. Um, and then the next thing, I would go ahead and report that out to you. I could report that out to you on the 31st, this Tuesday, and then...
Jennifer, well, I'm sorry, but typically when there's something like this, we get a written recommendation from the attorney that's procedural in nature. And since this is uncharted territory, let's make sure we do that.
We can definitely do that, yes, and I could tell him...
The last thing we wanna do is mess the opportunity up because we're not following, following, you know, the, the right procedures.
Yes, he can definitely put everything in writing.
So, if all the T's across...
That's why I asked him to do this email.
If all the T's across and the I's are dotted, and there, there was a way to get this done by June 20th, wouldn't that afford us as a community a quicker opportunity to have our public community discussions and then repurpose that money? Without any more complication, right? Is that not what we're saying? Yes.
It gives us the license to have the conversations sooner. We don't know where the conversation's gonna go.
Right. No, we don't, yeah, but we're gonna have the conversation sooner.
Correct, right.
Okay.
Uh, just to make sure...
I'm trying to get to grass here, Eric.
Just, uh, to try and make sure that I'm clear. Um, if we get special legislation, does that then give us bias time to go either way? Or is that saying, okay, now we're gonna go from being locked into this option to being locked into that option?
I did not think it's gonna lock you into an option. I just think it's going to give you the okay to go forward with a new vote.
We need to get legal advice on that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Let, let, this is my, I really plan to advise me attorney.
Let's postpone any further conversation until we have some actual legal advice. Okay. Any other items for discussion? Any old business, guys?
Can we have this item put on the, uh, next, uh, board of ed meeting for field?
Sure.
Good.
Okay, um, sorry, any other old business, guys?
Nope.
Okay. All right, um, there was no public input one. No one had signed up for it, but we have public input two, if anybody would like to speak. You would? Okay. Let me, let me just read some information here. Okay, public input two is reserved for comments related to agenda and non-agenda items and does not require signup. The period for public input two is unrestricted to accommodate as many community members as wish to speak. Members of the public should address their comments to the board, and comments should no, be no longer than five minutes long. Uh, please don't discuss any particular person or any particular role that would identify a person. And remember, this is being videotaped.
Hi, uh, I'm Peter Solo, and I've been a member of the Facilities Committee since 1993. And, uh, I just wanna voice a concern. Uh, I understand the conversation that just transpired about options, legal options, about changing the, um, purposes of the, uh, the money that was set aside for a turf field. I think that Chris said something that really made a lot of sense, which is that, uh, as you move along, if it is possible to move along with this option of getting, uh, the legislature to pass a special thing, we really don't have a lot of information, uh, right now to work on at all. Uh, and, uh, we've been given conflicted information over a period of time. And I think it's really important to understand, uh, what the safety issues are. And also, not only the safety issues, but the conversation that originally took place in the Facilities Committee was about the insufficient facilities that we had in, not simply for interscholastic athletics, but for the kids in the community to use on a 12-month-a-year basis. And there really isn't, uh, an outside facility that they can use 12 months out of the year. The park appears to be that, but it really isn't. And this facility out here, because it's grass, gets muddy, gets all torn up, and it really is not, uh, made to be used 12 months out of the year. And up till, I think, last year, we always were required to let it rest for a period of time. It was either gonna be during the summer or some other time. And, uh, so the impetus for the turf, and again, I'm not saying that I'm, uh, advocating it, but the impetus for the turf was to address a facility's need, which was that the kids in the community, really, and above and beyond just the curricular program, the interscholastic program, needed, uh, a, a resource in the community that they could use year-round. They could use it in a formal way, they could use, and they could just go out and play ball, kick a ball around, you know, uh, that kind of thing. And we don't have anything, uh, in the community now. And I just wanted to emphasize that there is an urgency to address this issue. Um, the turf was an imperfect thing, uh, the way we thought about it. Uh, in the committee, we understood that there weren't, there weren't gonna be lights, you know, if you're gonna have an interscholastic thing. But the impetus wasn't simply about interscholastics sports, and it wasn't simply about recess for kids, and it wasn't simply about the gym program. It was, what do kids do in the summer? Where do they go? What do they do? What activities or what options they have? What do they do after school in the winter if they're not gonna be in a gym? And you know that our gyms are used more than any facilities probably in the school. So that's what the issue was. And I just wanted to impress, uh, upon the board, uh, and I know that you guys are aware of this, that this is something that really has to be addressed. And we've been only talking about it since about 1995. So, uh, again, I think there needs to be more information. And if, if the solution that people come up with is that they wanna put natural grass in there, that may not be sufficient, and again, I'm not saying opposed to it, but that may not be sufficient to meet the need that I just described. And then we must, I think, look for alternatives someplace else. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Come on up. Introduce yourself.
Hi, Susan Lamontaine. Um, thank you. I just wanted to thank you all, uh, for the discussion. Um, and I just also want to reiterate that those of us who have been strongly advocating against the synthetic turf have been doing so not because we don't think the kids need a top-notch field. We do. Um, and not because we don't think that our facilities are not, uh, to a sufficient level. Uh, we agree with that. Um, and we also want absolutely the best for our kids. Um, but we also want something that's, uh, for our kids that is, that we are comfortable, is safe. Um, we've actually spent, there is a group of moms who's spent a lot of time on this and has had a lot of meetings with, uh, organic grass experts. And, uh, I think it's been education for all of us. And we have had, there have been some private meetings, I know, with Katie, Jennifer, I don't know if you were in those meetings, and some of these moms. Uh, it's been, a lot of us have learned a lot about what we've been doing wrong with our own lawns. Um, and from what we understand from them, we have not been doing what we needed to do to have an organic grass field really be able to perform as much as possible. Um, is it possible that it wouldn't be a perfect field 12 months a year? That is possible. Um, but we've been told that it can certainly perform at a much better level than what we have out here. I also wanna reiterate that for a lot of parents, this is our only field at Pearson. It's not like it's one of nine fields and people have a choice. It's our only field. So I think that's really important to note. And I think the other thing that's important to note is that we have federal government bodies who have removed their safety recommendations from these fields. And the other thing that's important to note is when you see the recommendations from the CDC, from Departments of Health, and even some of the industry's own guidelines for use recommendations of these fields, that was really, um, shocking to me, for one. Um, things like advising kids to shower immediately after using these fields, to have food nowhere near the fields, to keep their water bottles off the field, closed at all times, um, and to remove, I think this is the language of one of them, remove their clothing, turn it inside out to reduce contamination, and wash. So I think these are issues that are, I, I know you all really care about the health of our kids, and it's, uh, it's some of these things that I think people were not aware about three years ago. Um, more, you know, more, um, research keeps coming out, more questions keep getting raised. So I hope that you will expedite this as best you can. I also hope that you'll maybe talk to another legal counsel about perhaps the most efficient way to do it. And I hope that we can at least make an attempt to have a spectacular organic grass field. Um, and if that fails, then revisit. But thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board?
My name is Janice Arbia. Um, I noticed one of the things that you were taking out, or, uh, was the bus yard lights, the solar lights. Do you have a plan, uh, in the, I'm a little naive, I'm not certain if you have a way of lighting it. You just took out the solar, or are we just keeping the bus yard in the dark?
We are looking into addressing that, because it is definitely an issue, especially during the winter months, and it does get dark. And, um, you know, right now we're working on, uh, the paving of the lot and also the fencing, but the lights definitely are gonna be addressed. It is a safety issue, and, um, we are going, there's just these particular solar ones, um, right now on the table.
Okay, thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board? Okay. Um, then I will ask for a motion to reconvene to executive session, please? Oh, for, um, for to discuss the employment of a particular person?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.